Welcome all to the September twenty ninth meeting of the Easton Planning and Zoning Board. As you can tell, this is a Zoom meeting and I'll read the procedures for remote participation. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom and will be broadcast and recorded live. Recorded and live on ECAT. To use Zoom, you'll need to use the link on the agenda or download Zoom application. You'll need the webinar ID to join by phone only. While conducting remote meetings, we'll endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members and applicants will be on video and audio invited to speak by the chair, public participants joining by Zoom will be muted with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. General meetings are not hearings and only for items under which the chair solicits public comment. Members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the public record. Members of the public viewing the meeting on ECAT may also submit questions in writing via email to dped@easton.ma.us. The chair reserves the right to respond to questions during a live meeting, but may limit the time for such activities. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email and will be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting for the public record. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function. Joining by phone only, press star nine. When starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record and please make sure that you keep your comments to a specific point on which the hearing is based. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held and off-topic commentary will not be tolerated. When all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn signaling the end of the meeting. So tonight, as always, we will start with a roll call. Kathy Kidd.
Here.
Alan Weeks.
Here.
Nikki Wolf.
Here.
And Robert Stetson is here as well. I don't see Amma, so perhaps he'll be joining later. Alright, so tonight, we're actually starting with the approval of the meeting minutes. Has anyone had a chance to review them? I see some shaking of the heads. I will accept the motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
And Stetson's an aye as well. Alright, next up is the continued public hearing at ninety-five Union Street, modification to definitive subdivision and special permit, estate lot, Garkon Corp.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering, representing Garkon Corp at this project.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. If there's anyone else here, you can feel free to introduce them for your team as well and then the floor is yours.
Well, thanks very much and I am flying solo tonight. The last time that we were before you on this matter was the middle of April. So it's been quite a while and we've made a ton of progress. What I'd like to do is just give a brief refresher of what the project is, talk about what we've done since we've last been here and then just answer any questions that you folks may have. So if you recall, ninety-five Union Street is a portion of the old Benson property and the frontage for it is through Winterberry Lane. Winterberry was created as part of a comprehensive permit and Winterberry Lane is private under the control and ownership of the Winterberry HOA. So when we had originally submitted this, well, let me back up for a minute. The proposed project is the creation of four single-family home lots, all of which front on Winterberry Lane. They are located along the east side of Winterberry Lane in the area that doesn't have houses on it, sort of between the two clusters. We had originally submitted this as an A and R plan and I think there was discussion on both sides of the table about whether or not an A and R was appropriate. It seemed to fit all of the criteria for an A and R with regards to lot frontage, area, and viable access. But because Winterberry was created through a comprehensive permit, there was a condition in the comprehensive permit that said any alteration would require a modification. So I think after discussion, the board especially was more comfortable airing on the side of caution and doing this as a subdivision modification, which is what we proposed. So since when we last left off in April, there were four things that we needed to accomplish. One was a sitwalk, which was held with members of the board and members of the HOA, legal counsel for both sides, and the town planner at the time, Stephanie Danielson. It was a very positive sitwalk. I think everybody got a really good handle on what was being proposed and helped kind of answer some questions on both sides. The second thing we had to do was file an ANRAD with the Conservation Commission to confirm the wetland boundary, which we did. And the ORAD, which is the resultant determination from the Conservation Commission, has been issued and filed at the Registry of Deeds, so the wetland line is locked in. The third thing we had to do was a peer review, which was done with beta. Beta, we did the peer review. We had a couple rounds of back and forth. And really, the result and the reason I lumped those three things together is because those are the three things that had influence on the design. So what I'd like to do is just briefly share my screen and just update what had been changed as a result of those three things on the plan. And if I can now find the way to do that, let's try this. Okay, so I believe everyone should be able to see my screen now. And this is the grading and drainage design plan from the set. This is probably the best one to talk off of to show everybody what is changed as a result of the three items that I talked about. So first, what you'll see is that the lot layout, the number of lots, the configuration, all unchanged. Still four single-family lots, still all fronting on Winterberry, still one estate lot, which we're calling Lot Three, that's got the forty feet of frontage required and then a longer driveway and is out in the back. The wetland boundary delineation really didn't impact very much. It did make our limit of work on Lot One a little tighter because of a small vernal pool that is located off the site. Still completely manageable and workable. And then Beta's peer review resulted in two things. One is an improved stormwater management system. The stormwater management system for this project is completely contained on this site. So it does not tie into anything to do with Winterberry Lane. It doesn't impact the existing stormwater management system on Winterberry Lane. Everything is captured along the frontage, treated for water quality, and then recharged back into the ground. Additionally, each proposed house, with the exception of Lot One, will have its own rooftop infiltration system. As part of our review with Beta, we did additional test pits out there to confirm that the soil conditions were appropriate for this and Beta concurred that they were. Not only do we meet all of the requirements for peak rate of runoff, groundwater recharge, and water quality treatment, we far and away exceed what's required for groundwater recharge and water quality treatment under the regulation, which is great. And then the last thing that changed on the plan, and I'm going to zoom in down here. There was some talk about whether or not we could provide a turnaround to access these four lots through the existing median. And we did do that. So and it was, again, it was actually a question that was raised by the HOA. They were in favor of it because what it would do is stop common traffic from running all the way through the second cluster of houses to access these four. So what we did is we did add a small cut-through, so to speak, at the driveway of Lot Four. So the idea would be that anybody accessing these four units would come do the cut-through right here and then not have to go all the way around. I do want to just be clear, though. That cut-through is designed for common vehicular traffic. It is not designed for heavy equipment. It is not designed for large trucks. Very simply put, Winterberry Lane is not wide enough to accommodate that. So larger vehicles will still traverse the whole of Winterberry to access these lots. Aside from that, those are really the changes that came out of this. The only other thing that we were able to do, and we talked about this at the site visit, was we moved the location of where the water and gas service is going to cross the median to the cut-through, so we only have to disturb it in one place. We've added a whole bunch of notation to the plan about returning Winterberry to its existing condition during and after construction. And the other item that was on our list the last time that we met was for the applicant and the HOA to come to a maintenance and access agreement. That is very much underway and I believe legal counsel for the HOA is in attendance tonight and can speak to this if need be. We, both sides would like to see what comes out of the planning board's decision so they can finalize that agreement appropriately. But we did provide a letter from legal counsel stating that the agreement is imminent. We are all in agreement in concept. And once we satisfy this process, if we're successful in obtaining the subdivision modification, that agreement will be finalized, recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and a copy of it will be given to the planning office for record as well. So I think we've really made some strides on this. We dotted the i's, crossed the t's, so to speak. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you folks have.
Mr. Dias, thank you very much for the presentation. Ken?
So this was, so I'll concur with everything that Eric said. Obviously, to the members of the board, this was kind of something I walked into during my initial tenure. I know that the work was kind of, they were finalizing some smaller details that you go through and look at the materials that were submitted through permidize and the legal letter saying we're finalizing some details, waiting on the approval from this to then finalize details on the legal aspect of things. My staff report has pretty much said they've already gone through. They did get their ORAD that was included. Mostly, what's being tied up is any, you know, any small items that we can have. Really, the big question was making sure that the stormwater aspect was addressed, which Beta has said that it is. Beta and Mr. Dias have worked back and forth to kind of get this, to get this to the endpoint here. Obviously, with the time between April and now, they've been doing that to kind of get this, to get this sorted. The remaining items are really, if there's anything in the Beta report, are very minor. I wanted to wait until the stormwater aspect got finished to then, you know, if there's anything really minor or small, we can wrap it up tonight. Give them a thumbs up on the formal piece and then if there's any small administrative, any small details or minor changes that need to be made, we didn't see any, but if there was anything that we could be able to address administratively prior to building permit and everything else. As noted, they did have their wetland area flagged and so that is locked in for a three-year period. Obviously, in terms of the construction, any sort of work within the, any sort of disturbance or work within the jurisdictional areas will require separate wetlands permits. Standard condition, you know, you obviously have to, given that I kind of came into this towards the end, your standard conditions of any other permits that you have to get. I believe there is a possibility that Lot One could be done without a wetlands permit, but it's just the usual, you know, just if there's any issues. But all the others, obviously, any other permits that would be needed, you would still need to do, work with those. And then obviously, we do not, there's no conditions related to the, you know, the homeowners association thing in terms of, you know, maintaining any agreements, working with them or not, because as the town, we don't have the ability to enforce private matters between them, but it's a recognition that there are legal agreements between them and that those things should be done, kind of a good neighbor policy and have those items. Obviously, those would be recorded and then forwarded as part of the, forwarded to the town and put up on the permidize as part of the building permit application when these four lots come in. So tonight, I believe we can, staff is of the, of the impression that there's been a lot of work that's put into this and I do believe and Beta has concurred that the public hearing aspect can be wrapped up. And if there's any loose ends, we can tie them up as we discover them administratively. And obviously, any other subsequent permits that would need to be pulled would have to be complied with. But it's been the broader, the broader shot of this is that this is ready to go and obviously, any conditions that we have attached to it, you know, standard, you still have to pay attention.
Jump in and go back to something you said a few minutes ago, because I actually don't remember. I didn't see your staff report and I don't recall the standard for minor modifications. But the question I have is about the agreement, because I know that was a big issue when we started looking at this. And is it your understanding that we cannot impose a condition that the applicant enter into some form of an agreement for, you know, either HOA usage or taking care of the road or however we want to craft it? Is that, is that your understanding?
No, it was a sense of the, you have to enter into it, but in terms of enforcement, like, oh, you know, this guy didn't cut my tree. We can't.
Turn off. I just wanted to make sure I understood your point. Now I understand. I think I misheard you. My mistake.
Yeah, I think I might. It's a little weird coming from, I don't deal with private roads and whatnot where I was previously. It's been a long time since I've dealt with private roads, but yeah, it didn't come out. I was thinking about that myself. But yeah, now it's, they have the ability to recognize legal agreements between private parties. Enforcement actions are a little different when it comes to, you know, you're supposed to replant this, you said you would replant this tree and things like that, but.
Understood. We're on the same page. At this time, I want to open it up to the board members. Any questions for Mr. Dias?
I just have a very quick question and just for clarification. When you said large trucks would have to kind of make the circle, does that also mean delivery trucks?
Some delivery trucks. It would depend on the size. A Sprint, you know, Amazon has the smaller Sprint vans. They have some bigger box trucks, things like that. A Sprint van would make this, would make this turn. A bigger box truck would probably have to go all the way around. What we don't want to do is come to a situation, we did include a sign that says no trucks. What I don't want to do is have a larger truck try to make the turn and end up doing a five-pointer to get out of there. And one thing I can say, though, with regard to things like that is, as you know, people like Amazon or FedEx, whoever it is, they tend to try to group these, right? If they have ten deliveries to make in Winterberry, they generally send one vehicle for the most part. So, you know, that will, that will help cut down on any usage of the circle any more than need be.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. How big are the lots? I can't quite read the fine print.
Oh, sure. Actually, it's not on this plan. Let me pull up a different plan that will show that in a little bit more detail. So this is, you should be able to see this now. This is the lotting sheet that the board will hopefully endorse and will end up recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So just zooming in, Lot One is sixty-six thousand, which is about an acre and a half. Excuse me, it's two acres of upland, a little, two acres total, a little bit bigger and sixty-six thousand, which is about an acre and a half of upland. Lot Two is entirely upland. It's just over the forty thousand square foot. Lot Three is our estate lot. That is a total of about twenty-five acres. That's a very, very big lot. And Lot Four is just shy of four acres in size with about two acres of contiguous upland.
Okay, so these are consistent with our one forty thousand square foot, single-family zoning?
They are. They are completely zoning compliant.
Wasn't the original plan to tie into the stormwater system on Winterberry Lane? I remember some culverts or something going under the road.
No, we were, we've always tried to isolate our stormwater from the stormwater system on Winterberry. For no better reason than we don't want to have to rework theirs.
Sure. Alright, so it might have just been the water line that I'm wondering how we're going to get it over there.
That's exactly what it was, yes.
Yeah, we went for the sitwalk.
Yeah.
Okay, so these are or they are not going to be part of the HOA?
So they're not going to be part, my understanding, and Attorney Kurth is on the, is on the call as well. So if I'm mistaken, he can correct me. My understanding is that these will not be part of the HOA. However, they will be contributing to the HOA as far as things like roadway maintenance, things of that nature. So that's part of the agreement is, you know, there's a, there's a fee is a part of the agreement, basically.
I got you. Winterberry Lane, all of those homes, are those shared sewer systems or are they individual?
So they are all shared. There's two very large systems out there in the middle of the two clusters of houses, one that serves each cluster. These will be, these four will be individual systems on their own lots.
Yep, I can see that. Okay, I was just trying to refresh my memory. So these are separate? They're going to just, you know, pay some fee so that they can be part of the road and the roadway clearing? And other than that, they're not using any of the services within the neighborhood?
That is correct. They are jumping off of the water line and the gas line, things like that. But aside from that, you know, they may also, and again, Attorney Kurth can correct me if I'm wrong, but they may also be part of trash removal and mail and things like that. That's all covered in the private agreement of the HOA.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Kathy?
Yes?
Any questions?
Nope.
No, I mean, okay, at this point, I am going to open it up to the public. Suzanne, any participants?
We did have, let me see. I have to get back there. Ken, can you see?
Yeah, Eric, could you just unchair your screen for me?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, sorry about that.
We had to do.
See if anyone's raised their hand.
I got like three or four people. I just want to make sure I have everybody and that there's no.
Oh shit, that should do it.
Just make sure that there's no.
Why don't, why don't we step, I see Adam Kurth there and his name was mentioned a couple of times. Why don't we start with him?
Trying to unmute him. Adam, you should be able to just go ahead and talk. I don't have you as a, I don't have you, there we go.
There he goes.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Good evening, everybody. My name is Adam Kurth from the law firm of Marcus, Eriko, Amerin Brooks, here on behalf of the Winterberry trustees. Good evening, Chair, Board members. Good evening, Eric. Welcome, Ken. I hope your transition is going smoothly. Big shoes to fill there, I'm sure. I just wanted to respond exactly right because Eric had just mentioned things. I just wanted to verify things and I'm glad, I think, through clarity of the conversation, I think things are the way I thought they were, but I'll just ask a couple of questions maybe just to make sure that I'm understanding it right. Completely agreed with Eric. Yes, we've gone through a couple rounds of sets of revisions with the applicant's attorneys on the proposed road agreement. I think significant progress has been made. I know the Winterberry Board at their last meeting was looking at the latest updated version of the agreement, but I would also concur with Eric in that I think, and I'm glad to hear he agrees, I think both sides agree. Just because of the peer review and the wetlands mapping that had to be done, I think the thought on the Winterberry trustees side is they just wanted to make sure that we are not, as a result of this process, if the project were approved, that they were overlooking anything that needed to be in that agreement. And because there was so much back and forth between the town consultant and Eric, that's just, I think the agreement would be finalized, not in time for, you know, maybe a potential approval decision. That said, we have made significant progress and I was very happy to hear and see that in Eric's responses, in various responses, the applicant was open to a condition related to the road agreement, just that there would, the road agreement would be finalized and recorded. I think before, I would think it was prior to construction, so that was really nice to say. And I also would just say, in terms of Eric's work in general, I really appreciate his, and I think Winterberry would appreciate his efforts in really trying to be responsive. The town consultant put him through his paces and even going so far as to, to do those additional test pits in the last couple of weeks before, in continuing one more time to get that work done. I also understand that while Eric was there that day, he was able to speak with the chair as well and just sort of fill her in on the latest things going on as well. And the fact he took the time to do that while he was trying to conduct those test pits is appreciated. So I think that with, the one thing, the last thing I want to just make sure that I mention, just because there was some discussion about whether they will be part of the HOA. Yes, I think there will be some cost-sharing aspects between the four lot development in Winterberry, but they will not be part of Winterberry's HOA. Eric, I'm sure the attorneys on your side, on applicant's side, can speak to whether they are going to do any type of their own four lot HOA or whatever that is, but just wanted to clarify on that point as well.
Yes, that's correct and thank you, Adam, for those words. And this is something I should have covered. I do believe that there will, there will be an agreement of some form between these four lots to maintain the stormwater. We do have an operations and maintenance plan that dictates how to do that. That will be included in that agreement and that agreement will be also recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And I believe in our most recent response to comments, we have committed to providing the board a copy with that as well, once it's recorded.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Kurth. Next up, let's go to Felicity Kagan.
Felicity, you're still muted. I don't have, I don't have you as unable.
Is that better?
Yep.
Felicity Kagan at seventy-five Union Street. I live across from French Pond. You talked about the peak rates and the test pits and the peak rate of runoff. This is what I know, that in the FWS.gov, the United States Fish and Wildlife data from the United States Geological Survey indicated that of the wetlands mappers, you go to French Pond, zoom in there, that there's a man-made dike or dam crossing French Pond to ninety-eight R. According to the United States Geological Survey, it says that the water coming from Cedar Swamp on the north part of French Pond, the water's all backed up in the north part of French Pond. It impedes the flow of water from French Pond going through that dam in or out to the Dorchester Brook spillway. And I've talked to my neighbor about this, what we noticed about the French Pond Dam. It appears that the French Pond Dam, the levee or the spillway has not been opened up. So the water spilling through the Dorchester Brook spillway through the French Pond Dam has never relieved the level of water from the French Pond Dam going through Dorchester Brook and in ninety-eight R, ninety-five R, yeah, ninety-five Union Street. So that I walked back there with my daughter, there's absolutely no water running through Dorchester Brook. It's muddy, it's wet, there may be a little trickle, but on normal circumstances, the water looks, through Dorchester Brook, looks like it's three to four feet deep and rapidly moving. This summer, there was no water whatsoever. The French Pond Dam levee or, or gate was never opened up, allowing the water to go through, which makes me believe the test pits or the peak rate of runoff has been altered by this this gate of the French Pond Dam near Union Street to not allow the water to run through Dorchester Brook. They say that these FEMA floodplain maps, which that encompasses all of Phase Two of Winterberry and going around through my property is only forty-three percent accurate, meaning fifty-seven percent, it is, at the time, it's not accurate. That whole area of Phase Two is FEMA Zone A floodplain. The bottom of the Phase Two and bottom of Phase One, it's also in the Zone A floodplain. The area of my property through Dorchester Brook is on a floodplain. So you're going to have significant liability if you put buildings back there on a floodplain So you're gonna have significant liability if you put buildings back there on a floodplain. And there's catastrophic conditions for anyone who builds back there. They, um, you talked about the area near Lot One. Lot, the, that woodland area, it has numerous wetland areas that are have the pink ribbons. Uh, from a land surveyor tied to all these trees. And I gave the Eastern Conservation Commission pictures of it. And it shows the pink ribbons everywhere because that area south of my property to Lot One. Uh, is, has a lot of, a high water level. So I think that you're gonna have significant problems with water. And I understand, looking online, Blackledge Conoco has earmarked Winterberry Lane. For a hundred unit condominium complex back there. So I'm wondering whether they're gonna try to put it in uh, uh Lot Three, where that has the forty-foot frontage. And one other thing I wanna point out is that my property is the old French farm. Eighteen twenty-four, eighteen twenty-five. Each deed says that it goes up to the wall and land of Winfield Gray to the Eastern Brockton border. However, Wayne Benson sold this land to Garcon with that strip of land on the, next to the wall. Of the Eastern Brockton property, as though he owned it, but he doesn't. My land goes right up to the Eastern Brockton uh town line. The Massachusetts Historical Commission says, this house, meaning my house, occupies the street frontage of a large lot opposite French Pond. And then it extends south along the Dorchester Brook to the Brockton Town Line. So there is no access from this, the southerly part of ninety-one U Street. Along the Eastern Brockton Line. That's my property. And it goes down to the lot two hundred twenty-two point six-two feet near the pond in ninety-five U Street.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mr. Diaz, I'll give you one minute on that.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah, just with regard to um eh the test pits in, in the groundwater elevations. Um, eh, we don't base our estimated seasonal high groundwater table solely on physical water. We base it on markers that create over time within the soil. This shows how high um the, the water has raised over the course of the last, let's say, twenty to twenty-five years. So even in a drought condition, we can still determine what that high water elevation is. And that's what we design based on. Um, the only other thing I wanna note is that there is Zone A floodplain on the property. It was confirmed, the boundary of which was confirmed through the Anrad process, that is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And none of the work that is being performed is in the floodplain or even near the floodplain. Um, so we are very confident with our design, um, in, in our test pit results. They were reviewed by us, they were reviewed by Beta. Um, as Mr. Kirk mentioned, Beta did a good job putting us through our paces to make sure that we got it right. Um, so we're very confident that the design is appropriate.
Thank you. All right, next up is Stephen Gray. Mr. Gray, if past this prologue, you may have to try to hit unmute on your end.
Yeah, hi, good evening. I did not have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, you know what? Maybe I mis- misunderstood that. Uh, my apologies, Mr. Gray. So I am uh looking at Roy. And Roy, when you're indicated, just please state your name and address, your full name and address.
Uh, it's Roy Nakowitz and I'm at one twenty-eight Winterberry Lane. Um, just some comments and questions that I have. Um, I've been discussing with the HOA Board. Uh, kinda since this all started about the agreement. Uh, always trying to get a prelim- preliminary copy to just see what uh. We, the homeowners, are being committed to. And when I started going through information that's posted on the web. Um, where the documents get posted. Uh, I had noticed on August fourteenth, the attorney representing Garcon. Uh, had made a statement in a letter that both parties are in agreement conceptually. I expect the agreement to be finalized in the near future. I had questioned the HOA Board uh about that again and about some other things. And uh, so that statement was made on August fourteenth. On August twenty-sixth, I had questioned the board and the response was. There's been no change in the status of the project. The agreement is no, nowhere near being finalized, regardless of the information uploaded on the town's website. Uh, the concern that I have is, you know, there's going to be this agreement. The homeowners are not really sure of exactly what our board is um agreeing to. Um, and eh eh, you know, it, it to, to some degree, it puts us at some degree of risk. That's my concern. And then when I, I look at this median break that they're talking about doing. At when you begin to enter into Phase Two of Winterberry. Is that median break meant to be a temporary thing or are you planning on that being a permanent break? Across the rain garden?
Uh, have you, oh, oh, just one second. Have, have you finished your comments, sir?
No, I have some more.
All right, I'm gonna allow you to finish and then we're gonna give Mr. Diaz a chance to respond. And then we'll open it up to the rest of the folks if anyone else wants to.
Okay, because if this is a temporary thing, I just kinda question why even do it? Because at the, at that point in Winterberry, when the development was being built. And I'm an original home, homeowner there. Um, right at that curve coming into Phase Two, uh, there were. Uh, there was quite the water issue until the rain gardens were fully finished. My concern is that any modification that gets done in that area, we could wind up. Uh, having a similar problem that we had when the development was first built. Um, the other things are, let's see. There was an original designer of the drainage system for all of Winterberry. I don't know if the HOA or if uh anybody representing Garcon. Contacted this designer because they might be able to shed some light on what adding. These new homes uh so close to Winterberry might do. Or we might even find out that he was aware of that property uh becoming homes at some point. And might be able to share that he took things like that into account. Uh, water management by us seems to be uh very important. Uh, to the point of, we're not allowed to even wash our cars in our driveway. So, you know, I have a real concern with anything that's gonna be done, especially putting asphalt over uh that rain garden. Um, as far as the drainage systems that are shown for those four lots. Or eh, my question would be, are they active or passive systems? Do they require electricity for them to do what they need to do? Or are they passive and it's just gravity and the way the system is designed? Um, and the other concern I have is, I heard tonight. That even though there is an agreement between um the HOA. And the homes that'll go in there, uh, the enforcement of that, it's not clear to me. How something like that would be enforced, cause it, it sounds like the town doesn't have any authority over that. And if there's maintenance that needs to be done on these drainage systems. Who is going to make sure that that is going to happen? I mean, as an HOA, you know, we have certain rules in our community. Um, even, you know, speed limit, things like that. Enforcing that with people that are part of the HOA is not always possible, very difficult. And if we have four homes that have sophisticated drainage systems and they don't do the maintenance. What then happens to us? And my concern is, my home is in Phase Two. I really would prefer not to get flooded or have uh moisture problems or anything like that. So, you know, that's, th- those are my concerns. If there's an agreement, but there's no way to enforce it, that's really not much of an agreement. So, those are the concerns.
Uh, we appreciate them. They were very thoughtful. Um, I, I would just point out a couple of things at the outset and then I wanna allow. Mr. Diaz to hit a couple of his points. There's only so much that we as a board can do when it comes to these private agreements. Um, if the trustees of your particular condo association, and Mr. Kirk can tell you this better than I could, uh, have agreed to an agreement. I'm sure they've taken it into consideration and they have an idea as to how they're gonna enforce it or not. Um, but that's between you and the trustees and the trustees who have authority to make those agreements. And this particular developer. So, um, you know, that, that's just the, the way it is. Um, so on, in terms of the other comments, Mr. Diaz, please feel free to comment. You know, I'll give you another two minutes. There's a lot there.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and again, with regard, I'm just, I have notes, I'm gonna go through these in order. With regard to an agreement between the HOA and Garcon. Um, I, I don't know the conversations that were had between residents and the, and the uh trustees. Uh, but their representative, uh, Mr. Kirk is on the call and I think he did already confirm that an agreement is essentially imminent. Um, with regard to the median break, the median break is proposed to be a permanent break. Um, it was actually, I added to the plan partially at the request of the trustees to help limit traffic around Phase Two. Um, it is designed with a culvert beneath it. So that it does not impede flow through that uh median and take away capacity from the rain garden. Uh, that was actually one of the things that Beta had suggested and, and that Beta and I worked on was sizing that appropriately to make sure that it would not. Um, have an adverse impact. Um, the drainage for this particular, these four lots is independent, completely independent. Of any other drainage to do with uh the Winterberry. So we will not have an impact on the Winterberry drainage. Um, it is a passive drainage system, uh, meaning that it is all basically just gravity fed. Uh, no electricity required to do anything with regard to this system. Um, and then the last comment I'll make is with regard to enforcement of maintenance. For this particular drainage system. Um, although the, the town doesn't really have an ability to enforce an agreement between Garcon and the HOA. The town does have the ability to enforce what is in the operations and maintenance plan. For this drainage system that was submitted as part of the application. Because it does fall under the stormwater, uh, Massachusetts Stormwater Standards. So that operations and maintenance plan is made a part of the record. And it does state that this is going to be maintained in perpetuity under certain mechanisms. So if for some reason there was a failure to do that, the town could at some point step in and make that happen.
Alright, thank you. Um, I do see that, well, before we go to uh Mr. Kirk for some final thoughts. Is there anyone else that? Um, is there anyone new that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Suzanne and Ken?
I don't see any of them.
Alright, um, I'm, I'm gonna give Mr. Kirk one more minute, just because Roy, I think, raised some questions that. While I don't really think it's necessarily town business, I do think that he has more knowledge about it.
Am I unmuted again? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, this is Adam Kirk again. And yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll keep it short. I just did wanna at least acknowledge Mr. Nakovitz's comments. And just to let him know is, the agreement, yes, we've gone through several rounds of invi- revisions to the agreement. We've made significant progress on that agreement. But as I stated, we wanted to see the discussion here and how things resulted after the peer review process went through. To make sure that there aren't other items that need to be included in that agreement. And just to speak to the piece in terms of enforcement, um, as I had uh alluded to as well, Mr. Diaz was nice enough to confirm in the responses to the town's consultant. That they are agreeable to include a condition that there will be an agreement between Winterberry and um, the developer. Uh, regarding the road and that that will be recorded before construction begins. Um, since that document will also be recorded, there will be language in that that basically makes it applicable to the homeowners that will purchase. These new lots, um, and will be part of their title. So they will be subject to the rules and regulations of that agreement that we have negotiated extensively. And having extensive discussions with the trustees. And while I've also observed all of these, both the Conservation Commission proceedings. And listening to members of Winterberry that have been spoken to speak further with the trustees about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, we're not gonna just have a back and forth. Uh, you know, I only wanted to give Mr. Kirk and Mr. Diaz an opportunity to respond to specific questions that were posed to them. So unless there is anyone new that we have not heard from. I will at this point in time ask the applicant if uh, if he wishes for us to move to close the public hearing.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, I will accept a motion.
Move to close the public hearing, Wolf.
Second, Weeks?
Any further discussion, hearing and seeing none? Weeks?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Okay, so the public hearing's been closed. Um, I mean, obviously, we've heard a lot here. About the concerns about water back there. Does seem like there's been quite an effort over the past several months to address that and the peer reviewers are satisfied. And it sounds to me like the, the trustees are as well. Um, the, probably the outstanding question that I have, or wanted to get your thoughts on, board members. Is on this agreement. You know, I certainly understand why we, we should be getting one. And I re- you know, I certainly recognize and, and accept both Mr. Kirk and Mr. Diaz's representations. That it is imminent. I'm a little bit uncomfortable putting a requirement that they come to a private agreement. In a decision, I just think that maybe creates a bit of unfair leverage, one way or the other. That being said, it's a, a modification of a, of a subdivision plan. And there's a road there that we as a board or our predecessor board has considered. So I, I, I throw that out there, not because I have an opinion necessarily or have made a decision. But I, I did wanna get your thoughts on that, team. What do we think?
I'm going to preface this with, I am not a lawyer. Um, but it does seem a little unusual to reference a decision in an agreement. Where we haven't seen anything about it. Um, is that usual?
I wouldn't say it's usual. And, and I guess that's one of the issues that makes me a little bit uncomfortable about making it a condition.
I, I think that also makes me uncomfortable as well. If we're signing onto something that we have no knowledge of, um, kind of before the fact.
Well, and I think what we're, we've heard tonight is that they don't have it yet, but that it's close. And I, you know, I mean, to your point. They're not becoming a part of the HOA. You know, they're gonna need, they're gonna need to figure out access, so they're gonna have to come up. I, I suppose they're gonna have to come up, well, I guess maybe if we step back a second. Without this agreement, and this goes back to one of the first things that we talked about when we heard this, about this project. Without this agreement, they. They get access, but they don't have to do anything in terms of, of paying for it. Because we've modified the subdivision. You know, condo, the, the, the modification or the, the original comprehensive permit required the HOA essentially. Required the HOA essentially, the developer to take care of the road and utilities. So I, I, I do, I do think probably some agreement is required. So I guess the issue is, you know, I, I, I accept what Mister Kirk said and Mister Diaz said. I am a little leery about putting a condition in this decision requiring an agreement. That being said, I do think an agreement's necessary. So I don't know what, I mean, what do we think? Do we want to just leave it alone and accept their representations?
I mean, I think without an agreement, they don't have access to water and gas, correct, for the lots? So, I mean, they have to have an agreement.
Well, I think more importantly, the, I mean, I think the modification gets them that access, Alan. And that's my concern. But the, you know, the mo- the, the agreement is what creates the skin in the game for the developer. And I'm okay accepting what they both represented here tonight. I'm also fine, uh, even though I'm leery, in putting some sort of, you know, requirement in that. We could even keep it sort of general, that the developer will, you know. I don't wanna go crazy here, but pay some sort of. Pay their fair share. I, I don't know how to do it, but. Contribute meaningfully to the, to the access that they're be- being given. Ken, you don't have to raise your hand.
Old habit. So I think what, what I, what I put on for the condition, so. Part of the, this was kind of a, there were some issues. Uh, outside of Mister Diaz's uh control in terms of site work that were on other projects for the kind of the last minute timing of the. Submittals and other things that he was working on. So the staff report was in a final form. Uh, but wasn't distributed just because it was just with the time, timeliness of everything coming all together at once in terms of. Getting this project and other projects completely unrelated to this outside this town. So one of my, one of the conditions I put on, and I, I put on five just as pretty standard ones. And one of them was that. All legal documentation shall be executed, recorded, blah, blah, blah. Forwarded to the planning department and uploaded to the electronic permitting system prior to issuance of building permits. And I use that as a catchall, just kind of thrown together from all my previous times. Uh, certain catchall of all documentation, whatever it may be. Um, given that we may have declarations of trusts, you may have. Declaration of restrictions and covenants and easements, et cetera, things that are. Pertinent, that are tangentially related to a controlling document, but things that we don't review down to the deep.
The prob- the problem is, this is a unique one because the, the developer is not. In right now, in control essentially of the homeowners association that's gonna be. Taking care of this roadway and, and whatever, you know, the stormwater and all that stuff. So I, I do think it has to be a little bit more specific to bring this. You know, these, this grouping of, of, of homes into the fold, so to speak. Yeah, I mean, we could do something sort of general and, and we could just add on to your language. I think the language itself is fine. But I think we, I think we probably should add something. I mean, maybe just a. You know, a requirement that, that. The HOA demon- the HOA and the, the applicant demonstrate a mutually agreeable. Uh, contract with the homeowners association for. Their share of, of the costs.
Well, I think what it, what it could be is that, uh, in terms of what, what uh Attorney Kirk said was that if. An approval is granted tonight. Then the document would be uploaded, the, the agreement, so to speak, whatever form it may take, if it's almost, if it's pretty much there. They're waiting on whatever minor details they may be. That document should probably be recorded prior to. And once it's recorded, then forwarded to us to say, okay, this is all set. It's done, finished. And that's the only manner in which we would have the. Oversight, so to speak, given the unique nature of this.
Well, I don't think we're gonna get the, it doesn't sound to me like they're becoming a part of the HOA though. So I don't think we're gonna get a document that's recorded necessarily. It may just very well be in agreement with the HOA. I'm not sure we wanna require it. I mean, I, so I think, I think it's fine to do something that's sort of generalized. And, you know, we'll just add it to your language. I mean, that, that's, I guess that's probably what, where I'm at. What do we think, board members? You know, maybe we should just keep the language general too, you know, a satisfactory agreement between. The applicant and the HOA regarding use of the roadway, et cetera. Something like that. If we, if we like that, or if you guys have something better, please feel free to make a motion.
Mister Chairman?
I would love to be able to speak to you again, but it's just we closed the public hearing. I, I can't. I can't do it. I'm sure you could help us through this discussion. Maybe I should have asked these questions more previously, but I, I just, I can't do it.
Yeah, I, I understand. I just thought I'd take a chance. I had a suggestion, but you guys are on the right track.
Uh, can I make the motion as Bob proposed? Given that I'm not going to be able to repeat all that and I'm very afraid I'm gonna confuse something.
Alright, and so just to be clear, what I'm suggesting is taking Ken's condition. On including all these documents and uploading them to permidize prior to the issuance of the building permit. But adding. A, an agreement, a satisfactory, or an agreement satisfactory to the HOA. With the applicant governing use of the roadway and apportionment of costs.
So, motion, Wolf?
Second, Weeks?
Alright, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Weeks?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Alright, best of luck to you guys.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate all your help.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Ken, very nice to sort of in person meet you.
We'll get there at some point. Yeah, everyone. Ciao.
Thank you, everybody.
Next up, uh, we got a request for comment. This is an administrative appeal. This is again over eighty-nine Kennedy Circle. Um. Ken, do you wanna lay this one out for everyone? I don't know if you've had a chance, if everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, but Ken, why don't you lay it out?
This is a really, in terms of permidize, the. When things for, when applications come to the Board of Appeals and again, they get sent out for municipal review. The Planning and Zoning Board is one of the. Uh, signatories, so to speak, on. Those co- on those areas. So same as Water Division comments, Historical Commission would comment, things like that. We, in the same vein that we would provide, that commentary would be provided on, say, a dimensional variance or a special permit granted by the Board of Appeals. They typically will, the, the application will come through and request comments from municipal agencies, Planning and Zoning Board being one of them. The, in terms of what I propose is that because. And we don't see them very often, appeals of the zoning enforcement officer are not very common. I've only seen one in my time in Massachusetts and I've had two of them in Rhode Island. The. We could just say that it's not a, the applica- the zoning application is not a matter of development concern. It's not a. Dimensional variance or a special permit, things like that. Therefore, just no comment would be, or not applicable or no comment, um. Could be sufficient, given that it's not a matter relating to consistency with the master plan or, or anything like that. Um, just, but it's a, it's a.
Well, that, and that's fair, but just, you know, just for the benefit of anyone that's, that's watching and. Having taken a look at the staff report. I read the issue, this is an ongoing issue over at eighty-nine Kennedy Circle. And it, it seems like. The uh woman who was running the daycare filed some sort of a zoning enforcement action. To essentially violate some of her neighbors that have been having signs there for an extended period of time. Speaking out against her, her daycare. And this is, we've, we've seen these folks quite a few times in, in uh, the, kind of the planning side of things. And more recently, when it comes to ta- uh, you know, some proposals for the upcoming town meetings. Here, I, 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 I s- I tend to agree with Ken's analysis that it really doesn't. Impact, you know, our typical planning and zoning issues. That being said, I, I mean, it does involve signs. I, I don't know. And, but this is something that we've tried to talk about. Over the years and. You know, um, is that, is that something, the, the enforcement side of things? Is that something really that we wanna be commenting on? I don't know. I, I, I tend to, tend to agree with Ken's analysis here. It, it, it seems to me like these are. Um, issues that we really, we've already kind of done what we needed to do with this project. I think we gave the neighbors an opportunity to come in and talk about some of their. Uh, i- issues that they wanted to raise at future zoning meetings. I mean, I. I think we've, I think we've done enough here. That's my thought.
And for the application of the board, that was my intent as well was to. Enforcement is a, it's a, it's a, it's a component of zoning, but not a similar component in terms of where we would opine on it. And also given that it's, it's signage. And there's also some, you know, free speech aspect of it and that just enforcement. Again, being a component of zoning, but not similar to a component of. You know, variances or things like that. That was kind of my approach to it was. It technically needs a, the con- a concept of a, you know, a, a component of zoning, but not the same zoning that we would typically get with. Requests for commentary on variances of special.
Right. What does everyone think?
I, I guess I tend to agree. Uh, I, I did a drive-by after our last uh meeting on the subject and discussion and, um. That, that's all I'll say on the matter, but it's, um, I, I, I tend to agree with what you said, Bob.
So on this, if, if, if that's, if everyone is inclined along those lines, um. I mean, I think at this point, we just, we just don't even need to give them a comment, though. I don't even think we, I don't think we need to vote to provide no comment.
Yeah, I would literally just go into permidize after this meeting and just put not a pla- I think not, I think not applicable is the base. Um, like it's base vacant, um, you know, response. That's all, that's literally all.
My only, my only concern about not applicable is what happens in the future case in the event. That, you know, we find a zoning enforcement situation that we do wanna comment on. I, I just, I'm a little bit. I'm not saying you're wrong here at all, and I happen to agree with you. I, I just. But it's mostly fact-specific here, so I just don't wanna kinda get us boxed. I, I'd ra- I'm just more inclined to just say no comment.
And I think there's a way. I'm gonna look, I'm gonna, I've got dual screens going on right now. I think there is a way. Let me just check to make sure that you can. I think you can just do a standard. You could type in whatever you wanted to.
Okay.
If that's the case, I'll just put in no comment. I believe I've seen, I believe I've seen no comment. Um, I just have to.
And certainly we could do that on, you know, the typical variance requests, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Kathy, Mickey, do, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I think, I think we're better off staying in the no comment zone.
Okay.
Cause I can, because not applicable is the cu- is the, you can, you click on, it's like a number of, um. Well, it's a little, not tick boxes, but they, the circles, you can only choose one and then you can put in a comment. And then please enter your comments. You could, you could just put no, uh, no comment.
No comment? Yeah, let's do that.
Right, yeah.
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm ju- putting the cart before the horse. Mickey?
I agree. I'll say I also did a, like Alan had done a quick drive-by through the neighborhood. I guess I agree with the no comment.
Alright. Well, then we're all in agreement. Okay, um, next up is a street accept- acceptance. This is Jonathan Drive, Lincoln Estates. We need to do a vote to recommend to place Jonathan Drive Street Acceptance on the warrant for the special town meeting. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I just turn, sorry. I just assume, I see that you guy, I saw as part of the packet, you got the extensive uh material from Public Works regarding. Uh, Jonathan Drive. I did take a drive out with the Assistant DPW Director, Deputy DPW Director. Just to see it. Uh, I went out to see Sherwood as well, just part of the. Get to hang out with one of my, one of my coworkers, but also as part of my standard, just get to, get a chance to get a breath and drive around the town and see. Look and see the various places. Uh, so the. Essentially, the same Sherwood Drive and Jonathan Drive were similar in terms of their dates of completion and the. Uh, items that they needed to get completed. And Public Works typically says, okay, here's a list of things that, uh, you know, here's what we do. If you, you know, we make these recommendations to bring these up to the standards that we're looking for and. Apparently through the, through his letter, uh, those things were not met and Public Works feels that the uh road was not. Uh, completed or, or done to the sa- uh, done to their satisfaction. And so he makes a recommendation, uh, to not put it on, to make a negative recommendation, uh, or to not recommend for town meeting. Based on his, uh, his memo and the attached documents for it.
You know, it's funny, I, I'm not sure I remember where this, why wasn't this done thirty-seven years ago?
I believe it was the standard. It got finished and then with everything that was going on, I, I, I believe he had multiple other projects in other communities. And it was just, it was never. Street acceptance, it oftentimes comes down to, they just literally forget about it because they have other projects. When you get down to the last, you know, you get down to the last lot release and it's built. You move on to the next thing and, uh, it gets, you know, put on the back burner. Um, but I believe it was, I believe Stephanie sta- uh, Stephanie stated they were done roughly around the same time. Within a year or two of approval and construction.
What, wow. Man, I'm just wondering why this is coming up right now. What's the reason for this?
I would imagine if I have to. Um, it's either that the, I don't know the specifics for this one. But I would imagine that in my previous tenured pla- in my, my other places I've been at, a lot of it was the. Uh, homeowners don't wish to do the snow plowing and the road maintenance, or that the roadway. Is reaching the end of its original construction life period and they, um. The cost associated with getting a roadway repaired is much more than what homeowners typically expect. Or. It, if it comes from homeowners themselves, they were not aware that it was a private street. And so they start seeing these issues. They start doing some of their research in terms of, okay, what do I need to do? And then they find out it's a private road. Whoa, wait a minute, where does, how does that? I, I wasn't aware of that. And they try to, like, hey, this is what, I, I didn't realize I had to pay for all these things. I thought it was just how, you know. We wanted to have a contractor do these things because it was faster, but. That's typically in my past where I've seen with similar street acceptances. Many, many years after final completion and, um, final completion and construction.
Do, do we know who's doing the plowing? Is it, is it the residents, the developer or the town?
I know the developer is the one doing the actual proposal. He's still, uh, he still has some bond money left.
Okay.
And many times, especially with older ones such as these, and again, I'm not saying for this one in particular. Uh, but many of them, they say, well, it's not worth it for me to go through all the work to do the. Do you get the finalized builds and everything else when there's, that costs me more money than what's in the bond? And it's cheaper for me just to not finish it than it is to actually finish it and get it through street acceptance. That's typically how I've seen, how they've come into my lap. Um.
Is that what's going on here? There is a bond and it's small and it doesn't cover the cost and. So who ends up with it? Is it the residents just end up with the road or, uh?
Yeah, the residents end up with it. The developer will, it still stays in the original. The, the bond itself still stays in whoever took the original bond out. Uh, but if the, if the developer walks away, and I've seen it happen, the bond still stays. And the town can still go through the, the, um, they can still go through the process of taking the bond. The bond, which is a process in and of itself, to then put that money towards whatever the remaining work is. In every scenario that I've dealt with, the remaining bond work. In every other scenario, but with similar circumstances, the remaining work. The cost of the remaining work to bring it up to compliance far exceeds what's in the bond amount, which is why it was sitting in the first place.
Isn't that the point of the bond, though, to cover the work not done?
The work is typically not supposed to be within three years. Your construction cost estimate.
Oh, yeah.
Percent.
Thirty-seven years.
Added, yeah, it's, it's never enough, and that's why we typically put as a condition. You've got three years to do this, because the cost estimate is a snapshot in time and as soon as you, it's like. Driving a car off the deal is a lot. It depreciates twenty percent as soon as you leave the lot, so.
Well, the tough part is, we don't, we don't have anyone here that, that is, is gonna advocate for this either, do we? To answer all these questions. I mean, we've got the email exchange and that's about it.
Yeah, I mean, from what I could read, it sounded like DPW wanted it brought up to a certain standard. The developer said that standard didn't exist back when I did the road, but it does now, so. It just seems like there's a back and forth.
Yeah. Well, the DPW clearly recommended voting against it.
And I believe in his report too, it stated that the, um, that the top course. Instead of, you know, like, hey, typically we allow if you use, if you. Not a tear, not a tear out and redo it down to, to base and binder and go from there, but if you. If you reseal it a certain way, and I'm sure I'm, I'm gonna grossly oversimplify construction aspects. But essentially, if you use this product or you use this type of. Uh, construction process, which you kind of seal code and do everything. If you do it like this. We do something similar with similar types of roads and where that's amenable to us because we use similar practices. The developer chose not to do that, went their own way, in a way that wasn't acceptable to the public, to Public Works.
Right. Well, I, yeah, I mean, I tend to think, you know, why, why, why should this be the responsibility of the taxpayers thirty-seven years later? When he didn't, if he really, if this was really important to him, he should have done it back in nineteen eighty-seven.
Much of the commentary, much similar to what I've heard since I came here and I got, I was made aware that this street was coming.
Board members?
The taxpayers lose, right?
I, you know, I, I tend to agree with you, Kathy. If, if no one here is gonna advocate, then I, I wanna go with the experts.
Yeah.
Accept the motion.
Motion to not add, can I do, can I motion to not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion to not add Jonathan Drive to the fall town meeting, fall twenty, twenty twenty-five town meeting warrant, Wolf.
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kid.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. Alright, uh, next up is. Article twenty, proposed amendment regarding minor technical revisions to the accessory dwelling units. And definitions of the zoning bylaw to comply with Attorney General's review. Uh, Ken, can you just run us through what the changes are?
So these are just changes, and there are two changes that were part of this. So there's a change to the. There's an additional requirement in terms of the prohibition on short-term rentals, Airbnbs. Uh, whatever the other short-term rentals are, they always keep changing. So essentially sho- a prohibition on short-term. Uh, rentals and as well as tweaking the definition of accessory dwelling unit itself. Um, this was, I believe, as it was explained to me, the definition. Has been amended slightly from the state and part of the review from the last town meeting, when I went to the Attorney General's office. I said, oh, you need to do, there was no issue with the substance of the bylaw itself. They just said, oh, ju- change the. What you put in as the definition has actually changed or it's been amended slightly. Do it as this instead. This is what it's referred to and said. So what the proposal that you see. The strike through and the underlying addition, uh, underlying insertion is just to, is more of a textual. Uh, compliance in terms of their, uh, AG's review, and that's all of it. Same thing with the, uh, short-term rental prohibition.
I looked at it, seems to make some sense to me. I don't know. Any other questions or comments, motions?
Motion to accept, uh, the zoning amendment as written, uh, modifying the, um, ADU.
And to place it on the warrant.
And to place it on the warrant. Apologies.
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. Uh, no real chair updates, uh, you know, I, I would like at some point. In the next few meetings, once Ken has got his arms around things a bit more. I'd like to see kind of a list that we could go through and talk about. About some, some of the changes from the, um, uh, from the consultant's memo. That we might wanna get on the docket for the spring meeting. And, you know, I know we kept on talking about it as like low-hanging fruit. I know it's probably not that simple. There's probably some in-house low-hanging fruit that we could. Look at as well as some stuff that we might need to, to try to put on the, the, uh, the meeting agenda. But at some point, you know, I would, in the next, at least in the next couple of months. I'd like to, I'd like to see what that looks like, so we can have a discussion as a board and see what we wanna do. Also, I, I, you know, Stephanie had always been really good about putting together. Timelines for us. In the event, we are gonna try to get something on the spring, uh, meeting. I just wanna know what we, what we have to do in terms of. Public hearings and votes and, and things of that nature. I'm sure we have some time, but I don't, I don't know precisely how much.
So I'll use that to segue into the director's update, so.
Perfect.
Uh, so the first one is I am working on the consultant's report on the low-hanging fruit. You are correct. Eighty-five percent of the, of the proposed. Changes, revisions, good ideas, et cetera, things to do are internal. In terms of clarifying checklists, again, I believe I've explained at my, um, board meeting is that. Function of the checklist, uh, in Rhode Island had changed significantly, so we were required to have checklists. And so I know that was part of it is a, so, uh, just getting those. And using, uh, getting those updated and provided. We have those, we're just gonna tweak them over and look at them. Clarifying the placement of some rules and regulations, making sure they're all in the same spot, the right spot, they're updated. Some of the other items we can discuss too. I'm working on some physical formatting of that report. He was one of my lecturers at UMass. And he very openly admits he's not much of a formatting guru, so I'm making it a little bit more reader-friendly. There's a lot of charts that were very much should be landscape, but he doesn't, he. It's difficult for some people that don't use Word very often, that don't use it, that you can. Switch it to be landscape on one sheet. Only for one page of the report and then switch, so that's what I'm doing right now. So when I get that finished. I'll provide that to the town administrator and then get that to you guys, so you can all see it. I do see that being done, uh, before our October meeting on the twentieth. So I, I will have that ready to go and I'll, I'll provide that to everybody so we can see it and use that as a basis for, um. Kind of things moving in the future. And then I'm gonna look through. The files and see if there's, I, I know I have them from my earlier time in Norwell and Br- uh, Norwell about. Uh, town meeting timelines of, okay, this is when it opens, what do you need to do? Kind of the process and getting that going, that'll work nicely with our. Meeting schedule when it comes up, because then we'll be able to figure out, okay, if we know that town meetings on this date, we can work backwards. To figure out when those things come. So I should have that, I can have that at our next meeting as well, if I can find anything. And if not, I can put something together off of, and kind of go back into my file, my personal files. Uh, and see what I have to pull it together, but that is not a, uh, not a difficult task. I know I have them, I just have to find them. And then, uh, same here, I know they're here in the system, I just gotta find where they are.
That all sounds great. Thank you for the updates. Alright, I think that's about it, folks, uh. And one final motion.
Wait, excuse me, Ken, did you wanna talk about the next meeting date?
Yeah, so the way our chair, uh, so chair through the, uh, excuse me, through the chair, so. Next meeting, the way the schedules work because of the, sometimes there was some fifth Mondays or mix-ups and mixes with the dates. We had a next meeting was for next Monday, Ju- uh, October sixth. And so we just wanted to, it was the sixth and the twentieth, so I just wanted to. Say we have nothing in the fu- we have nothing in the system right now in terms of what we need to act on or anything. Uh, so I just wanted to point that out, that, uh, we, we could move to the. Uh, queue for the October twentieth and, and kind of give everybody a break, because I don't think you wanna be back here next Monday as well.
No, I think that makes sense. Thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
Thanks to you, Suzanne. Excellent. So we'll be back. I, I guess the long and short is, we'll be back on October twentieth, not October sixth.
Correct.
Excellent. Perfect. Alright, with that said, one final motion.
Um, motion to adjourn.
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stetson, so that's it. Thank you, Easton, and even though Amos isn't here, I think one of us should say.
Good night.
Good luck.
Good night and good luck.
Alright, have a good week, guys.